Good evening. Chair calls the order, public hearing for Resolution 015-22, master water and sewer plan update for spring 2022. Good evening, Mr. Dumbek. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Very well. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Chris Dumbek. I'm with the Harford County Division of Water and Sewer. I'll be presenting the 2022 Spring Water and Sewer Master Plan Update. The first revision is two tables and grids. Revision one is the only revision in this section. It is located in grid C6 of the Water and Sewer Service Area Maps. It is identified as parcel 381 on tax map 66 and located in Edgewood. It was previously known as the Flying Point Marina subdivision. Identified on the map by the green shading, the Flying Point Marina subdivision consisted of lots 1 through 5 and was approved for 200 apartment-style condominiums and retail space. The project was never developed, and the preliminary plan approval expired. In addition, no activity for the development has occurred since it expired. Therefore, the property is being moved from the Water and Sewer 3 category into the Water and Sewer 5 category. Next will be Chapter 3, Section 3.13, entitled Proposed Developments, was revised to remove the Flying Point Marina development. As previously stated, the Flying Point Marina development had preliminary plan approval expire. The next two pages in the workbook cover Table 3-1, Plan Developments, and was updated to reflect the development activity over the last six months for two projects, Omar Village Residential and Locust View. In addition, the Flying Point Marina project is also being removed from the table. Final page, Table 3-1, shows the revisions of the summary of the remaining residential, business, and industrially-zoned units with approved preliminary plans. As you can see, the net change in the residential units was a reduction of 261 units with 3,317 units remaining. There were no changes to the business zone or industrially-zoned acreage. Next is Table 3-8, Plan Capital Water Projects. This table is updated to reflect the overall observations of the water system, project inactivity, and as requested by the City of Aberdeen. The table in this workbook includes only the projects to which changes are proposed. A comprehensive table showing all capital water projects in the county and the three municipalities can be found in Chapter 3 of the overall Water and Sewer Master Plan Next is Chapter 4, Table 4-2, Plan Capital Sewer Projects, was updated to revise the construction timing of several projects in Harford County and the City of Aberdeen. In addition, several projects have been removed due to project completion or inactivity. The table in this workbook includes only the projects to which changes are proposed. A comprehensive table showing all capital sewer projects in the county and the three municipalities can be found in Chapter 4 of the overall Water and Sewer Master Plan Table 4-3, Discharge Records of Septic Hallers, was revised to show the 2021 data per month for all septic-hauled sod-run wastewater treatment plant. This revision is a standard requirement from the Maryland Department of Environment to provide current data for each spring master plan update. The final section in the workbook is the written request from the City of Aberdeen for proposed revisions. That concludes the revisions to the 2022 Spring Water and Sewer Master Plan Update.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to thank you for taking time, you and Mr. Patine, to meet with me earlier today and go over a few things. And then, at this time, I'd like to open up to questions from council members, if you have any. Council member? All right. Well, then, seeing none, I guess that'll be that.
Thank you.
And this will conclude with, I'm sorry, public speaker's, I didn't think we were on the side. Thank you. With no one else signed up, this will conclude the public hearing for Resolution 1522. And we'll now close the hearing and start back up at 7:30. Thank you. Chair calls the order, legislative session date 22-011. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer with Councilman Schroedz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Dear Heavenly Father, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for the many gifts you've bestowed upon us daily and those which we may not take the time to notice, the opportunity to freely come together to meet the needs of the people we represent, the health and well-being that most of us take for granted. Bless us that we may recognize not only these, but many other gifts that you provide us with, that we may come to thank you and acknowledge you daily. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Agenda item number four, Presentation of Proclamations, National Library Week, April 3 through the 9th, 2022. Council, it's our pleasure to welcome Mary Hassler and her team from the library. Councilman Schroedz, you're going down front. Gentlemen. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Wagner.
I'm going for a budget presentation in a couple weeks.
Where's the costume?
Where... Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community, these facilities connect people to technology by providing access to broadband internet, computers, and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. Today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals serve an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Libraries strive to develop, maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. To adapt to our changing world, libraries continue to expand their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their customers. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, they are the cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week, now therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this fifth day of April 2022, do hereby salute April 3 through 9, 2022, National Library Week. All residents are encouraged to connect with their library this week by visiting in person or online to access resources and services.
It's a great honor to present this proclamation from the County Council to you. I think that our libraries are absolutely amazing, not only the libraries themselves, but the staff. I mean, everybody's incredibly helpful. You help, they help everyone, whether it's a job application, you know, just so many resources that are available, and we just appreciate the dedication of all the libraries and your entire staff. And also the voluntary board directors and then the foundation board as well, because we wouldn't have all the amazing things we have without, you know, the work that they put into it. So with that, congratulations, and I know you have a few things to say.
I do, too, Chad. I'm coming off, so I'm going to get you guys out. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to introduce a few folks who I did bring and we invited to come tonight. These are our honorees of our most important award that we give out every year, the Winnebago Farnie Award. Ms. Farnie was one of our original directors back in the 40s and 50s. And these young ladies, I will say young ladies, exemplify the amazing customer service and the dedication and commitment that they give back to everyone in the community, no matter where you live, no matter how old you are, whatever demographics you have. They will serve you and provide you with the best customer service you will see ever. And I'm even saying that, I'm a Disney freak, and I know about customer service and what really excels. So let me introduce you to a few folks. I have here Melinda Chase, she's from our Bel Air Library. Also is Mary Shem from our Silver Reader, our Outreach Mobile. Then we have Deborah Wilton from our Harvard de Grace Library. And then we have Bethany Van Grin from our Children's Department at the Bel Air Library. And then our coordinator of all this is Leslie Greenlee Smith, who is our Director of Communications and Marketing for the library. So a big round of applause for them.
And I won't take long, because I see a lot of blue hats out in the audience who want to speak tonight.
Teal, teal.
Come slowly, okay. One of the things about your public library, I have a trivia question for you. What institutional organization has more outlets than McDonald's or Starbucks in this country? The public libraries. The public libraries, your taxpayer money is put to excellent good use. This is our 75th anniversary, this week we're celebrating, and I just want to say, we are so thrilled to be part of Harford County community and to provide what we do every single day, whether it's your little ones getting them ready for school, or it's our seniors with our Silver Reader. We are there for you. And I just want to say, during lockdown, we heard from so many of our customers about the front door service, our pickup service, that we were your lifeline during a very dark time. So thank you so much for everything you do for us. And that's it.
Do I have to all scoot this way, or maybe some people move on to the other side? Okay. Yeah. Oh.
Now you got to move back.
All right, perfect. That's great. Okay. Mr. Wagner, I can't see you.
Chad, move out of the way. Yeah, I'm good now.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. It's always a pleasure to have Mary with us here in the chambers. We always look forward to all the amenities she brings with her during the budget process, so keeps Councilman Bueller entertained. Agenda item number five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Council appointment, Harford Living Treasurer, Henry and Barbara Holloway, Mr. Schroedz.
Thank you, Council President. I make a motion to approve the Cultural Arts Board nomination of Henry and Barbara Holloway as a Harford Living Treasurer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. It's been moved in second to approve Mr. and Mrs. Holloway for a Harford Living Treasurer. Is there any comments? Mr. Schroedz.
Yes, just a few. A lot of us in rural Harford County know Barbara and Henry. They're so involved with the agricultural community, the 4-H, the farm fair, you know, their children, they've all made impact on Harford County as well as their grandchildren. So I think it's a very good nomination that Ruth Ann Poole of Jarrettsville put together to nominate them, and just wish them the very best in the future. And at a later time, I'll make the presentation of the Harford Living Treasurer to them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel? All right. Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schroedz.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative and one absent, the appointments of Henry and Barbara Holloway as a Harford Living Treasurer are hereby approved. Executive appointments, Commission on Disabilities, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion for the new appointment of Stephanie Schwartz and the reappointment of Andrea or Andrea Beechler to the Commission on Disabilities.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Buella? It's moved in second to approve the new appointment and the reappointment. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schroedz.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative and one absent, the appointments are hereby approved. Number six, special presentations, we have none. Seven, approval of minutes, public hearing, March 15th, 2022, legislative date 20-010, March 15th, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions, we have none. Nine, introduction of bills, Bill 22-006, zoning code, Mr. Wagner.
Bill number 22-006, introduced by Council members Wagner and G. N. Giordano, an act to add the definition of cidery to Section 267-4, definitions of Article 1, general provisions of Part 1, standards and to repeal and reenact with amendments the permitted use chart, uses classification, services, all of Chapter 267, zoning of the Harford County Code as amended, to provide for a definition of cidery, to designate the zoning districts where a cidery shall be permitted and generally relating to zoning by the Council, April 5, 2022, introduced red first time, order posted, and public hearing scheduled on May 3, 2022, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Agenda item number 10, introduction and consideration of amendments, amendments to Bill 22-003, Paramount Peninsula Moratorium. Mr. Wagner.
Amendments to Bill number 22-003, introduced by Councilmember Buella. Amendment number one, on page 2 and line 20, strike in Paramount Peninsula and substitute Peninsula as delineated on the attaching map. Amendment number two, on page 4, after line 9, insert the following, Section 2, the attached map is incorporated into this act and delineates the boundaries of the Paramount Peninsula, which is subject to the temporary moratorium. Amendment number three, on page 4 and line 10, strike in Paramount, or in quotes, I'm sorry, Section 2, and substitute Section 3. Amendment number four, on page 3 and line 3, strike date this act becomes law and substitute effective date of this act. Amendment number five, on page 4 and line 9, strike becomes law and substitute takes effect. Amendment number six, on page 3, strike beginning with quotation marks "A" in line 20 down through "Permits" in line 21 and substitute "One Traffic Engineer."
Thank you, Councilman Wagner. Agenda items number 11 through 14, we have no business this evening. 15, business from the President, we'll skip that just for a second. 16, business from council members, and we're going to start with Councilman Buella tonight.
Thank you, Council President. I have no comments tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Buella. Mr. Wagner.
Now, I don't have that much tonight. I just want to say that, you know, this, the whole Paramount Peninsula situation that we're in and trying to decide what is the best route for Harford County and certainly for the community of Paramount is on all of our minds each and every day, I believe, for all of us. I've spent a lot of time reading past documents and things that I have and have gotten, as I told someone earlier before the meeting, that some of this dates back to 1988, '89 in terms of the traffic situation being forecast at the time, and that was when it first got started. And we've identified what the problem has been now for, what, almost 30-some-odd years, and we just haven't arrived at a proper solution yet. So hopefully, in the near future, we can arrive at something that we can certainly look at as a goal and achievable goal. I think it's what we're all looking for, is that achievable goal that satisfies the community and it doesn't put a damper on business in Harford County, and it moves forward. And with that, I'm going to do something I typically never do. I had some surgery on Thursday morning, and I am going to be leaving you guys at this point, let you all have it for the evening, and I'll check out what the comments were at a later date. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman. Do you want to step out now?
Go ahead, I'm good.
All right. Mr. Schroedz.
Thank you, Council President. Just a few things. First, I want to let everyone know that the Subcommittee for Agricultural Land Preservation came together, and they did a presentation to my colleagues on the council. I thought it went very well. It was also attended by members of the administration, and then also Bill Amos and Jen Wilson, who worked with the program directly daily. And I also wanted to really thank Kristin Kirkwood and Deborah Bowers, who were basically the Subcommittee that has, have probably put, I don't know, 150 hours into this. So I thought it went very well, and they want to meet with the Ag Land Preservation Board and some other individuals, and we'll see what path we're taking from there. So, but just wanted to thank everybody involved and thank my colleagues for participating. I did have the opportunity to attend the Starlight theatricals ribbon cutting in Whiteford. They're going to be, it's just, they did an outstanding job, if you know where the Whiteford Packing Company is, and they have a studio there, they're going to be doing nine-week classes, summer camps for youth ages 12 through 18. So I wish them very well in that endeavor. They're all very passionate about what they've brought to Whiteford. There was a few passings, Jean Galbreth, a friend Diane Mahaffey, Justin Cole, Zachary Peron, and Barbara Kirchner, she's an artist from Jarrettsville. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schroedz. Mr. Jan Giordano.
Thank you, Council President. Myself, along with a couple other councilmen, attended the Fleet Maintenance ribbon cutting up in Hickory. So that's a collaboration of Harford County Government and Harford County Public Schools. So it's good to see them both working together. It's a $10 million facility that should serve us well in the future. Myself, a couple other councilmen, we're up at Ripken Stadium to dedicate the two new baseball fields up there. I'm a big baseball fan, so it's just, it's amazing to see all the kids that want to come there. I've got relatives in New York, New Jersey, they can't wait to come down here and play in that facility. It brings a lot of, brings a lot of people, generates a lot of activity, and that area flows into the, to Bel Air, the surrounding areas. I've met people that have come here to, you know, they're playing, they go out to eat all over the county, so it's not just Aberdeen. It really does transcend the whole part of the county, that they're here for a long weekend, they're staying places, they're looking for places to go to eat, they search on Google, they go out, they go to the restaurants, so I'm glad to see that. I also want to say congratulations to Angel on her grand opening of Stay Line over in the shopping center by Safeway, and they have bar classes there. And then, on Saturday, I was able to attend my first Eagle Scout ceremony for Joshua Brown. Congratulations on his Eagle Scout. You have to be, you know, I learned a little bit about Eagle Scouts, they have to complete everything before they're 18. Very few people are Eagle Scouts, so there's a very small percentage, and Joshua was able to do that, so I congratulate him. And finally, on Sunday, I went to the Bel Air Wrestling Team banquet. Coach Reddish, he had four seniors, none of them won the state titles, but they all placed pretty high. As a fellow wrestler at Bel Air, I just thought it'd be good to go, support them, and look forward to anything else I can do to help. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Jan Giordano. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I don't normally do this, but I want to give one shout-out to something that I attended. It was the Women of Tomorrow event that honored the women past, present, and future here in Harford County, and it was young women from 7th grade through 12th grade that are doing outstanding things in the community along with their academic achievements. So it was an absolute phenomenal event, and the, our county is in good hands with these young ladies that are going to be the next generation, the future. So I was very, very happy to have been at that event. So moving on, I would just want to say happy National Library Week. Also, it is Autism Awareness Month. So, you know, I just wanted to give a shout-out for that as well. Finally, I know we've been off for two weeks, and everyone's been digesting the public hearing from two weeks ago. And I'm not sure if the Council President is going to make mention of this, but I think that we're in the process of, of course, looking to see how legal this is with the Paramount Peninsula and the moratorium. My issue with the moratorium and whether it's legal or not legal is simply because just a year and some change ago, we placed a moratorium on a particular, on a particular property. So I think I need to change my title from Councilman Johnson to Councilman Nostradamus, because I said back then that we would open up Pandora's Box with moratoriums, right? And here we are. So, you know, we're, you know, I'm still, like I said, I'm still digesting this. The community needs better. I know the council wants to do better. I certainly want better for the community. But, once again, there's a legality issue here. Finally, I'll just say this, and, you know, with the whole legality issue is, is that I'm not quite certain where the legality issue was for that particular project up north with the Farm Brewery. So, you know, once again, I think that we find ourselves in this proverbial pickle, right, where, you know, okay, one's not good for the other, and so on and so forth. There has, and I, and I, once again, I know you guys hate to hear me say this, but I'm a military guy, and in the military, we have standards, right? And we have, you know, if it's in black and white, and you have, you have it on paper and what it should be, then that's, that's the path that we're forging. We shouldn't be picking winners and losers and things like that. So that's my only issue with a lot of stuff that we have here, and I know that, that, you know, Council President may say that we're not picking winners and losers, but from my standpoint, not the council's standpoint, my standpoint is, is that, you know, we, we open up Pandora's Box once we do something, and then when someone else comes in and says, like, the teal hatters, I will, I will never call you guys blue hatters again, but with the teal hatters, that, okay, if it's good for this person over here, then why isn't it good for this person or us over here? And, and that's personal to me, because it seems like for our, for my community, for the 40 corridor, we're always getting the bad end of that stick, right? So, you know, once again, I'm digesting everything that was, that was said from the, from the microphone in the rear of the room last week, and I'll have further comments if and when it comes up for a vote. But with that, Council President, I'll yield my time back.
Phew, you're getting as bad as Chad Schroedz.
I know, right?
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. So when we talk about the different events that we've attended over the last few weeks, the one thing that stands out is our community is full of dedicated volunteers. When we go to fire banquets, we see the commitment and the dedication that they have to their communities and the the dedication that they have to their communities and the counties. When we go to these special events, a group that Councilman Jane Giordano and I belong to, the SIAP group, had a wonderful gala. And that night, we gave $25,000 to the Harford Family House. And there's organizations like that all throughout this county and they do good. And it's part of what makes Harford County a spectacular and wonderful place to live. Congratulations to Councilman Schrude on his efforts with ag preservation and bringing the entire council together along with the experts in the field to make us better understand all components that make up ag preservation. I want to thank the administration for being willing partners in that meeting. And then the Women of Tomorrow Awards, Councilman Johnson, you're absolutely right. Our futures are bright and in good hands. There's no question about that. And our economic forecast for Harford County is looking very bright as well. And the list is long here. But a couple of things that I want to comment on is this past Saturday, I had the honor and privilege to sit with the Caucus of American African, African American Leaders. I want to thank all the members for the opportunity. We spoke about several different concerns that they have a strong interest in. Obviously, the health officer search, which is soon to start, the Police Accountability Board, legislation that's before us now, what the council's going to look like in the future with three vacant seats, and then also legislative sessions into the future. So we had a, a open conversation about that. We talked about some other issues that they had as well. And lastly, I want to touch on the Fiscal Year 23 Council Budget Work Session Schedule. That again, will start Monday, April 25th in these chambers, Tuesday 26th, Wednesday the 27th, Thursday, April 28th. There is a schedule of departments and, and department heads and directors that will be attending those meetings. And it is open to the public if anyone would like to attend. It'll also be livestreamed. And then in addition to the work sessions, council will hold two public hearings for the Fiscal Year 23 budget. That will be Wednesday, May 4th, 2022, here in these chambers at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Again, they will be livestreamed and open to the public for sure. And that schedule is also posted on the website. And with that, I believe I've touched on just about everything. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do, Mr. President. We have 26 this evening.
All right. Just, I would ask everyone, as I always do, to be mindful of your time and respectful of each other. And call your first speaker.
John Malamo, followed by Paul Filacci.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues.
Good evening to you, sir.
You know, I, I noticed Mr. Filacci's name starts, ends in a vowel. My name ends in a vowel. Your name ends in a vowel. You get two or three people whose names end to a vowel. You've got a Subcommittee investigating the Italian mafia.
Start your comments, sir.
John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive. Reviewing the actions of the Harford County Council in this situation. The council changed the zoning code related to airports for a special interest group. The language in the revised comment makes it impossible to operate a general aviation airport as it permitted use anywhere in the county. Have any of you found a location that proves otherwise? There was no opposition to the legislation at the public hearing. Why would anyone but the airport owners' group object to a change? It would close the airport. The legislation passed unanimously. It is painfully apparent that the county council had no understanding of the design and function of airports. The sitting council president who voted for the code change opposed the project presented by the Harford County Airport and recused himself from the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing for final arguments. Then there is a council member who sponsored legislation changing the code, who voted for that legislation, who then voted against the hearing examiner's recommended decision. Could be neither understood the design and function of airports or laws regarding special exceptions. Both the currently sitting president and a council member participated in the groundbreaking ceremony for the drone test facility and industrial use. The code and hearing examiner's decision specifically states, no industrial uses are permitted on Harford County Airport property. Did their participation constitute Zoning Board of Appeals approved of that use? Was their participation a legitimate part of the Board of Appeals process? Do you believe any, the airport owners, the county administration, the county council still support the zoning code change and the hearing examiner's decision? Please do get back to me on that. When the county administration reversed the decision in zoning case 5814, you took no visible action. When the county administration did not uphold the decision of zoning case 5814 and the code at Harford County Airport, you took no visible action. When the county administration approved accessible uses at the Harford County Airport contrary to the code, you took no visible action. When the airport extended the commercial operation beyond the property at boundaries at 3538 Aldino Road, you took no visible action. The answer questions presented to you, you are responsible for all the irregularities cited. As you did not uphold the decision of the Board of Appeals, your decision. I judge it unlikely that you will do anything now, which is a failure of both to meet your responsibilities and properly, properly exercise your authorities. Council President Vicente, although I've been waiting for more than a year for the answers you agreed to provide, please don't bother. Your silence in the matter is sufficient and tells me more than your answers don't. Perhaps you would consider the job you were elected to. Take responsibility of the zoning and land use laws you pass, ownership of the zoning and land use decisions you make, and uphold the actions you take. Direct your en, your energy to those areas. Demonstrate how government and governance should work, not how it works in Harford County today. Good night.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Paul Filacci, another Italian for the, live at 320 Marina Avenue in Perryman. I just want to start off with, and address Councilman Johnson. And sometimes you just need to have courage. You've got to evaluate the situation and do the right thing. So I was just hoping all you guys as you evaluate what's going on with the moratorium, you kind of look at the whole situation and, and think about if it was your house and you had warehouses in the backyard already and they're going to put them in the front yard, do you have the courage to do the right thing to help your neighbors out? That's what we're asking for. Tonight, I was going to talk a little about traffic. So there's two traffic reports that came out based on the traffic assessment. There was one from the county, one from the state. There's a difference. The county had 15 errors or improvements. The state had 22. I was just going to highlight three of the differences that the county did not identify and why we feel there should be this moratorium with a study group because maybe the, the county doesn't have all the expertise that they need on the DAC Committee. So number two, based on the number of parking lots and parking spaces shown on the site plan, 3,773 parking spaces, 2,178 trailer parking spaces, a total of 5,951 spaces, it appears the project is anticipating to bring significant volumes of traffic to the area. At peak hour times, the site only generating 416 peak hour trips and 572 peak hour trips in the PM. Please provide explanation of this very large quantity of vehicle spaces compared to the trip generation. It doesn't match, like we've been saying before. 5,000 versus 4 or 500. So the, the state identified this. The county has not. Number four in the state letter, Exhibit 9A, state-generated traffic truck trips indicates 65% of the vehicles headed to from Riverside Parkway. Two from the site will, will take Maryland 543 to US 40 to Spisusha Road. However, trucks over three quarter tons are not permitted on Spisusha Road. This appears to be in an error since intersection number six shows no trucks turning on Spisusha Road. Again, not mentioned in the county's 15 improvements. We know about Spisusha Road, right? No trucks on Spisusha Road. Number three in the state corrections, we note that the trip generation rates for distribution centers used in the study were developed in 1996. Although the county may have provided the trip generation numbers provided in TIS, 416 trips in the morning and 572 again in the evening. In 1996, the number of trips proposed is slightly less than the quantity yielded that they had utilized the ITE 10th edition. Additionally, developers should update their report utilizing, utilizing trip generation numbers that correlate with site plans submitted and resubmitted for review. So again, all three of these were not in the county. And this is one of the reasons why we want to have a study group to look more into this. Luckily, we had provided this information to the state and they listened to us and they put it in their report. Same information to the county and it wasn't in their report. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chip Riley, followed by Nancy Post.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Chip Riley, Park Beach Drive, Perryman. I spoke mainly in the past about the infrastructure nightmare for Mitchell Farm project, but tonight, I'm going to speak about the Bush River. I grew up across the river from Perryman in Longbar Harbor. My family was a member of the Bush River Boat Club. Now it's called a Yacht Club. This was during the 60s, 70s, and 80s. Actually, my grandfather owned the area when it was a girls' camp during the 1930s. I learned to water ski on the bush, but I was warned of the pollution of the water. And we were always told, don't swallow the water and please take a shower in a bathhouse before going into the, into the club's pool. Most of the pollution was coming from the Beta Shoe Manufacturing Company, which was located where Water's Edge Community is now. Many of the EPA regulations that we have now were not implemented, implemented yet. There were many different byproducts from the shoe making dumped into the river. The surround, the area surrounding the manufacturing company was a small town. Most of the townspeople worked at the shoe company and there was a small dump for the community. That small dump was located approximately near where the warehouses are located now at the loop of Route 543 and the intersection of Route 40, which much, with much of the byproducts from the shoe manufacturing and the dump along the shores of the Bush River, it didn't have a shot in hell to survive if something wasn't done. Well, it did improve with the closing of the shoe manufacturing plant and the cleaning up of the dump. The bush started to thrive again and the wildlife came back and the environmental numbers have improved. There is still much room for improvement, but it's, has gotten better over the past 20 years. We, as a community, have mentioned many times of a park or beach complex for the Mitchell Farm area, not another mega warehouse complex that will most definitely turn the tides for destroying the Bush River. Just when the pollution levels are improving, they are improving slowly, but now, but with the stress of the mega warehouse complex, it will most likely damage the water quality of the river once again to bad levels. Oh, by the way, I have heard that the 715 and Woodley Road connection isn't going to happen anytime soon or if at all. Just thought I'd mention that once again. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Hello. Nancy Post and my information is on file. I'm trying to make adjustments here in real time. We wouldn't need so many moratoriums if the grids had not been greased for the builders and if the county wasn't owned by the builders, which we can see by our, the, the destruction that they can do what they will. All the concerns of Perryman Peninsula have been raised by the Abingdon Woods advocates. And we need to, Abingdon Woods not to be the sacrificial lamb to satiate the appetite of the builders. Because as you were handed a lot of information last week by the president of SEBNER, which is the Chesapeake Bay National Estuary Reserve, there are serious concerns for Otter Point Creek, which is part of SEBNER. And I did salt watch over the winter and just salting raises the levels in the water. So you can only imagine with, when you look at the site plan, there's like thousands of cars and trucks that are going to be introduced into the community riding over the Ha Ha Branch, bringing pollution. And it was laughable, the environmental mitigation that the builder put forth, showing their lack of concern. And the fact that they, they provide a plan that they don't even have to stick to, God only knows what will happen. And we know, but we need you to really get it through your heads to know. Because what you do today destroys it forever for the gen, us and the generations that come. And that will be on your resume to the day you die, even if you escape Harford County and the damage that's been done here. It will follow you because it's wrong. And we're at, we need you to represent us, not the builders. We elected you. You're supposed to represent our interests. And how many times do we have to write, call, speak to have you work for us? What is your motivation to prioritize the will of builders over us? We can pretty much tell you what that is, but I won't name it in this moment. But money has to be the driving factor because we're fight, fight, fighting. And 326 acres and the Otter Point Creek and the SEBNER Reserve is in danger because of inaction. We need you to fight. If you saw the climate report yesterday, the clock is ticking. We, we have to preserve every last tree. And our, and if you like clean water and clean air, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brittany Russell, followed by Ellen Shinelli.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Shinelli, ends in a vowel. So I want to mention that last week, I respectfully took some photographs of a sign positioned at the street's edge near the Mitchell Farm. The sign was simple. Future site of Mitchell Farm State Park. I posted this photo on Facebook on April 1st. The response was tremendous. In fact, most of the responses were from names I've never heard. The post received many thumbs up, many love, many loves, and lots of laughing out louds. There were a few angered by the insincerity, disappointed that it was a farce. But the overall feeling was one of hope. The Harford County community wants the farm to be a park. They want a place to hike, a place to fish and crab. They want a place to take their children and enjoy nature. They want a refuge from the development the county is ramming down their throats. Our small coalition is finding more and more people that want to help. We are reaching out to resources for funding. This would be so much easier if the county council and executive was on our side, the county's side. This is what the taxpayers, the people you represent, want. Why are you allowing an out-of-county developer dictate what happens to the farm that they will never see? They will never come and visit the warehouses. They will never see the destruction created. They will never drink contaminated water or breathe contaminated air. Instead of cozying up to the developer, the only winner with this proposed land use, the county officials should be holding discussions with the landowner. They should be offering alternatives. The county should be facilitating the establishment of a state park. The landowners have one more chance at creating a legacy. Let's help them make this happen. Harford County has the means and connections to buy the land and return it to the beauty encountered by John Smith in 1606. This is what the county wants. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kate McDonald, followed by Janine La Cour.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Kate McDonald, Park Beach Drive. Good evening, President Vicente, council members. I'm here tonight to express my support for a moratorium on mega warehouse development in Perryman. Economic development is the creation of wealth from which communities' benefits are realized. It's more than a jobs program. It's an investment in growing an economy, enhancing the prosperity and quality of life for all residents, especially those in the development area. The intent- The intent of economic development is to build up, not to pick the poorest, most disinvested portion of the county and start dumping warehouses on it, then taking that increased tax revenue and spending it on land preservation and infrastructure in areas more affluent areas. Economic development is meant to bring positive, equitable investment to the area in which it happens. And nothing positive or equitable is coming to Perryman with this project. Neither the developer nor the landowner can give you one positive impact for the Perryman residents, not one, it doesn't exist. For years, Harford County has been dumping warehouses in the Perryman area without any thought to how it's impacting the residents, their property values, their quality of life, their health and safety. You've not taken any of the added revenue and made investment into mitigating the environmental and infrastructure issues these developments have created in Perryman. To Mary Glassman, this is an enterprise zone, but to us, it's home. For many of us, it was home long before it was Glassman's enterprise zone. We all have every right to use whatever means necessary and available to us to fight for what we've built in Perryman, and we vow to do just that. We've stood up here for many times over the last several months and told each of you that these zoning practices and policies are in fact disproportionate and discriminatory. The harm and injustice you are inflicting on the Perryman residents that have to deal with this wreckage on a daily basis is irreparable and needs to stop now with this project. In fact, we are starting to see other municipalities and other regions starting to take a second look at these types of developments and the social and environmental impacts on the minority and lower-income areas that are targeted by developers. I feel it's incumbent upon this council to do the same. The people of Perryman, regardless of their socioeconomic or ethnic status, deserve the same thought and care you would give if this horrific plan was to be built in your neighborhood. If a moratorium was legal and necessary for something as nefarious as a farm brewery, then I certainly think it's warranted here in this case where people's actual lives, health, and safety are at risk. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Janine Lacor, 1820, Park Beach Drive. History tells us when there's an imbalance of power, human beings will attempt to dominate one another. It happened to the indigenous people of North America, it happened through slavery. As Councilperson Johnson said, "We live in a world of winners and losers, but it doesn't have to be that way." Just because something is legal, doesn't make it right. We have choices. We have a county that touts its master plan, Harford Next, for the next generation. Yet what legacy can residents of Perryman Peninsula pass on to the next generation? Reckless development is endangering lives through unsafe roads, impairing waterways, and devaluing property. This is not new. It has been happening for over 30 years because there's an imbalance of power, as acknowledged by Councilperson Wagner. Thirty years ago, Light Industrial looked like the farm-based canning operation still visible on the Mitchell property. Today, we're being told Light Industrial is 5.2 million square feet of freight distribution terminal, the size of three M&amp;T Bank stadiums with accompanying gasoline storage on land that directly abuts to the Bush River. Most reasonable people can see the flaws in this designation. Our county's plan is focused on preserving communities, protecting the environment, and linking to the past. All strong points. Who can disagree? I can, when the plan is based on winners and losers. When past, present, and future generations of those living near the Route 40 corridor, including the Perryman Peninsula, are sacrificed. It's time to pause, to look at the data and recognize the citizens of Harford County who have been protesting this development for 30 years. We're not radicals. Rather, the system that produces such an imbalance is significantly flawed. Please, vote for the Perryman Peninsula Moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Greg Lacor, followed by Lee Maddox.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Greg Lacor, 1820, Park Beach Drive. Over these last few months, I've learned a lot just from coming here and from my community. And a couple of things that have been hammered and hammered, and our big guy that normally sits here is not worth his day with Ron, but he's been hammering at us with the safety of the water. I thought about it, when I was a little kid, I thought it's just, you turn on the water. The water came in, you got your water, and that was it. And I can remember my father talking to my mom, telling her about the high taxes and how much it costs to run water. I was like, what? You have to pay for water? Okay, and from that, my mom just said, "Pay the bill, I like clean water." I can always remember that. Now, all of a sudden, I'm coming back, and now I'm opposite age, and I'm thinking about the same darn thing. And now I just found out that they want to put a gas station onto the peninsula. And they're saying that this water's not going to be damaged? Come on, you know, please, that's, we've got some great, smart people getting up in front of me, a lot better than me. But gosh darn, I'm learning. So please, consider this, the cat is out of the bag, okay? Moratoriums have happened. Pause. Let's get this drinking water under control. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
See, Ron's not here to lower the mic. He's out of the world. Ronnie, you gotta come back home, because I don't know how to work this thing, literally. There we go, sorry. Good evening, Lee Maddox, Protect Perryman Peninsula, 1700 Church Point Court, Perryman. Recently, this council was told three big lies concerning the Mitchell Farm property. You were told that if you acted as a legislative body, you would be obstructing the law. This would be laughable if it wasn't such an overt threat. You also heard veiled references to the takings clause. Completely improper. Their lawyers know this. Finally, you heard some nonsense about the zoning. This is the lie I will address tonight. H.G. Wells once said, "Advertising is legalized lying." And gentlemen, I am here to remind you, the zoning nonsense is a sales pitch, and to ask you and everyone watching not to fall prey to a developer's false mantra. The proposed Mitchell Farm project is appropriate only for industrial, general industrial zoning. The Mitchell Farm property is zoned Light Industrial with an agricultural overlay. It has been a working farm for the past couple hundred years. It fronts the Bush River and rests on wellheads critical to the Harford County drinking water supply. The proposed project is general industrial, both in scale and scope. One of the buildings is more than a half of a mile long. If built, it would be the sixth-largest distribution center in North America. This building, combined with the other five, amounts to 5.2 million square feet of concrete, which, combined with the vast paved parking lots and trailer parking, is 178 acres of impervious surface. This is a freight terminal, not a permitted use in LI. It is the size of three M&amp;T Bank stadiums, which are built up, not out. The five buildings would cover four times the landmass of the Pentagon. Any developer or engineer who asserts this project is appropriate for the current zoning is engaging in false advertising at best and outright deception at worst. The truth, the truth is, the project being proposed for the Mitchell Farm is appropriate only for general industrial zoning. Please, people of Harford County, do not play into their big lie. Please, protect Perryman Peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will Graham, followed by Stacy Stone.
Good evening, sir. Uh, Will Graham, I live on Cool Spring Road in Bel Air. And I'm here tonight to defend Abingdon Woods and Perryman Peninsula Mitchell Farm property. I've been here to a few of these now over the past couple months, and I spoke a few weeks ago. I doubt anyone remembers anything that I said, although I thought it was a pretty good three-minute soliloquy. I haven't written anything down tonight because I'm here out of an urgent fear for these properties, but our environment in general, the human environment, the planetary environment, which we're in the middle of a crisis that will by far surpass anything that we've ever seen before in history. It sounds dramatic, but I have a couple quotes. And it's from a man named Peter Kalmus, who is a climate scientist at NASA's Jet Propulsion Lab. He says, and he's an author, and I've been reading some of his stuff. He says, "I use satellite data and models to study the rapidly changing Earth, focusing on biodiversity, forecasting clouds and severe weather. I have a PhD in physics from Columbia University and a BA in physics from Harvard. Number one, global warming is happening with a rapidity that leaves me speechless. And number two, when we lose the Earth, if we lose the Earth, oh how desperately we will long to go back to how it was, how we wish that we had not taken all this for granted." There's a group called Scientists Warning, who made a report in 1992, 30 years ago, that says, "We, the undersigned senior members of the world's scientific community, hereby warn all humanity of what lies ahead. A great change in our stewardship of the Earth and the life on it is required if vast human misery is to be avoided and our global home on this planet is not to be irretrievably mutilated." We only have this planet. This is it. There's no other planet. We're not going to go to Mars when we destroy the environment on this planet, and we are destroying the environment on this planet. We're doing everything wrong. The examples are incapacitating when you go to look at them. And I know that Harford County can't fix the planetary climate, but we can do, we could fix, start to fix our little piece of it here. We can be an example of what to do right. Because it sounds dramatic, and it sounds hyperbolic, but it is dramatic. We're killing ourselves, and we're whistling over the cliff. We don't realize it. Money, greed, power, it's not going to matter when the environment collapses. So, please, think about that when you make your decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Stacy Stone, 2106 Park Beach Drive. I'm going to start by pointing out that 100 years ago, it was illegal for women to vote. My ancestors, the women that came before me, fought for my right to be here. They were ridiculed, they were raped, they were murdered. Sometimes the laws need to be changed, and sometimes we need to look at the guidelines and rules. I'm asking you tonight to allow that to happen on the Mitchell Farm through this moratorium. Over the past 30 years, substantial roadway improvements have not been done in the Perryman Peninsula to support the numerous warehouses that have come into place. I was out today on Perryman Road looking at a problem. Through my job, I look at drainage complaints and concerns on state highways. And I was out there looking at a pipe that needs to be replaced. The reason it needs to be replaced is it is a relatively shallow pipe that has a lot of traffic, a lot of truck traffic bouncing over it, and it's damaging the roadway. I know firsthand that the amount of trucks out there are damaging the roadways on the Perryman Peninsula. We need those to be corrected for the existing traffic before we even think about adding any additional traffic out on this roadway. I'd like to point out that Chesapeake Real Estate's Traffic Impact Study underestimated the existing traffic that's out there. And I dare say, they underestimated the percent of truck traffic. Chesapeake Real Estate's Traffic Impact Study also underestimated greatly the traffic, the projected future traffic from the existing facilities out there, businesses and residential buildings. Chesapeake Real Estate's Traffic Impact Study vastly underestimated the proposed traffic from this test star development that we're considering here. I have the numbers, 4:16 in the morning is what they projected. It's 8:84, it's more than double, okay? 5:72 in the afternoon, 9:88 is what the number is. We're asking to allow us, the members of this group, to have the time to make sure things get done right before something's done wrong that can never be rectified. I ask you again to vote yes for the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Greg Pisano, followed by Holly McComas.
Greg Pisano, 1826, Park Beach Drive, Aberdeen, Maryland. I handed out a little brochure for you guys. I don't know how many of you have gotten a chance to get down to Perryman and look around. I know you have, Curtis. But we have two parks, and I just want to talk about them right now. We're happy to have those two parks. One of them's on Forge Lane, a lot of the community uses that. It's basically like a ring around a sediment pond. But people walk it, and it's paved, so it's nice. And it's something people enjoy and use. We have a second one, Harry Webster. Are you here still? Harry Webster here. He helped facilitate getting that second park that's down on Clubhouse Road done. And that's all estuary down there, and it's protected, and a lot of folks use that. They fish from there, just about any time you go past there during the day, you'll see one or two people fishing, catching things out of there. The water's healthy there for the fish. What we don't have, though, we don't have any basketball courts. We don't have any baseball diamonds, we don't have any soccer fields, lacrosse fields. We don't have anything like that. There's not a playground on the peninsula, not one. And I lived in Bel Air before this, and, you know, I helped build that, the one next to John Carroll. And there's Annie's Playground, there's, you know, and there's the cross fields and football fields everywhere. But nothing down on the Perryman Peninsula. So, you know, we talk about the amount of money that has come in from those other warehouses we're running. None of that money got spent down with us. So, put that, you know, I mean, just think about that when you look forward to this moratorium, or even more, even thinking about letting the warehouses come in at all. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, President Vicente and council members. Holly McComas, 1826, Park Beach Drive, Perryman. Imagine 700 acres of fertile farmland surrounded by hundreds of homes, developed irresponsibly, destroying the way of life for hundreds of Harford County families and residences. Now imagine 700 acres of fertile farmland turned into parkland. It contains exercise trails, bike paths, bocce ball courts for those that have the last name. For seniors and kids alike. An income-producing event center, which will produce revenue. Farms in Harford County already have these event centers that produce a large revenue, being rented for $5,000 to $8,000 a night. It would have a small restaurant that... It would have a small restaurant that maybe would handle the catering for the event center. Kayak and canoe rentals. An eagle cam in the eagle nest studying the eagle and how it grows and, and the babies and following it along. An ecological education center which would study the impact of Hartford County development on the estuary, the Bush River and ultimately the Chesapeake Bay. A garden lot. Imagine that, a garden lot that the community comes together and seniors could teach the children how to garden and plant vegetables. I like this best of all. The Mitchell Canning House Education Center and Museum. Preserving the history of the Mitchell family and the history of the land. This for Hartford County would produce good paying jobs that people actually want. It would generate an income for Hartford County and so much more. Don't get me wrong, the infrastructure would still need improvement. However, this, I, I ask that you give this project time to be the best it can be for the Mitchell family as well as Hartford County. Please give us the time to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy Van Enden, and followed by Rommel Crabtree.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Timothy Van Enden. Last name ends in a consonant, so we're all good. Uh, my address is nineteen sixty-three Mitchell Drive. Obviously, I'm in Perryman. Mr. Johnson, you're a military man. I am too. I wear it right here on my arm. Can you tell me what the difference between a one point seven million square foot mega warehouse and a one point seven million square foot freight terminal is? Yeah, I can either. The problem is one zoned LI, one is not. If nothing else, that alone should be worth a moratorium so that we can sit there and figure out what is what. Because you can't answer it. I literally just asked the question. I, I'd like to point out something that was brought up a couple of weeks ago as well. Uh, there were plenty of people that came up and basically stated that the proposed legislation is illegal. Gentlemen, only one group is doing anything illegal right now and that's actually Chesapeake Real Estate Group. They sent out a bunch of spam text messages today, which is in clear violation of the Telephone Consumer Protection Act of two thousand and four. That's illegal. I'd love to know what's going to be done about that because they have money. We obviously don't. It's illegal. It's wrong and it needs to be corrected. I, I want to take a second to talk, to talk specifically to Barry Glassman. I have severe problems when an elected official ducks and shirks his responsibility for five months, ducks his obligation to meet with constituents and understand his concern, to understand our concerns, then go on local Fox News and say, "Oh, we understand their concerns." How? How do you understand my concerns, sir? You've never met me. That is cowardice and it's passing for leadership and it's gonna stop myself or I'm gonna say something that's gonna get me
I'm about ready to stop you too. You don't need to raise your voice. We're all listening to you.
I apologize, sir. I just get a little animated when I speak.
Thank you.
But no, that, that is beyond unacceptable. It is disgusting and in all honesty, it needs to change. Especially seeing as how we have the State Highway Administration having findings that weren't covered at the county. Clearly, we know something because we pointed this out to the state. Maybe you should talk to us and really understand what we're saying. And I know you gentlemen are and I commend you for that because you're sitting here, you're listening to us. Generally intently, sometimes I understand things go. Barry Glassman, crickets. He's been ducking us for five months. At this point, it's willful. That, that has to change. Have a good night, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Rommel Crabtree.
I don't believe he's here.
Emma Peller, I'm sorry, Emma Peller, followed by Erica Phelps.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Emma Peller. My address is on file. Hello, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to start by thanking Councilman Beulah for taking the time to address my individual concerns at the Protect Perryman fundraiser this past Friday. I really appreciate you coming to talk to me. I also, however, can't help but notice Councilman Wood's chair is empty again tonight. I wanted to take advantage of National Library Week by saying that the library and all of their amazing staff has truly shaped who I am. I grew up going to the library once a week at least and it opened so many doors for me. I'm sure it has for many others, so I'd like to highlight what we can do for the amazing staff members there. Support their fight to unionize, to get the best possible working conditions for all library employees. Everyone should check out HPL United on Facebook to learn how to help them. I know I'm all over the place today, but finally, this brings me to my main topic tonight, Bill twenty-two dash zero zero three to place a moratorium on building in the Perryman Peninsula. We need this bill. And so we are asking all of you to vote yes on it. After the public hearing at the last council meeting, I'm even more convinced that an overwhelming amount of individual citizens, those who will be most affected, who live in this county, who work here, are against these warehouses and the increasing overdevelopment in the county as a whole. We do not need more warehouses. What we do need is green space. We need playgrounds and all these wonderful things that people have been asking for. You know, I'm so happy that you all have talked a lot tonight about helping this next generation that's coming up and they are our future. And we need to help them by giving them a sustainable environment, by giving them, you know, a place to be in nature and connect. So, please help us and vote to pass Bill twenty-two dash zero zero three. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you. Hey, guys.
Good evening.
Erica Phelps, eighteen twenty, Mitchell. What everybody else said. I should go sit down, really. You know, you guys heard it before. You know, I, I'm kind of trying to step in for Ron a little bit with the drinking water. He, I talked to him today and we were talking about it. We need to look at the ninety thousand residents that are going to be affected by this, just with the drinking water. That alone is something to look at. Again, as Ron stated, has these ninety thousand folks been told potentially their water may be impacted negatively? Probably not. Is there a way that we can actually identify who exactly those ninety thousand people are? Every website out there, it just basically says thirty percent of the county is getting their water from the Perryman wellhead. So who are these ninety thousand folks? That's yet another reason that we should stop and say, maybe we need to figure out who these ninety thousand people are and let them know what's happening. You know, Ron keeps, he wanted me to mention Flip Michigan again because of the amount of people that are affected is very, very similar to what's happening now. He wanted me to also talk about the same thing he mentioned before is when Jerry Powell basically said, "Well, yeah, I mean, if the water's impacted, well, we don't really know what to say about it. We're just following the minimal law that we have to follow. That's it. Whatever the minimal thing is, is all we're gonna, all we're really worried about." So, that's really all that I have to say. We have a lot of beautiful wildlife. We would love for them to keep their home, you know? And I hope you guys have came and seen the property. I know that most of you have. Can you do it again? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jillian Miller, followed by Lauren Anderson.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen. Councilman Rhodes, thank you for acknowledging Zach Perron. He was one of my previous employees and an amazing guy, um, working with adults with disabilities. April is National Autism Awareness Month, so I'm here to advocate for more resources for our population of individuals with deferring abilities. If the COVID shutdown affected you significantly due to lack of in-person interactions, imagine what it has done to our population that already had limited choices and activities and interactions. You heard the library representatives speak on how they were so, so many people's lifelines and I wish that was for so many more. When we were told to stay home, we had the opportunity to at least get in our car and drive around. Some adults with disabilities did not due to lack of transportation in Hartford County. When we could go participate in activities that had insane time limits and restrictions, our adults with disabilities could not participate due to lack of accessibility and time in which an aide or staff could assist them to get to these activities. In the last county budget, there was a very large amount allotted to recreations, but who wasn't included? Adults with disabilities. Programs that were set up were not friendly or accessible to our adults and further created a gap of inequality. The world is changing. We are no longer in the times of Rosewood where I personally picked up adults who were chained to beds, were thrown in a facility and left to just survive and have their basic needs filled. It's time for us all to do a better job integrating and it takes all of us to do that. You gentlemen are in a position to give input and should use that to advocate. I've seen most of you at a Night to Shine or other events for adults with disabilities, but just showing face is not enough. Action is required. Have a great night.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Lauren Anderson. My current physical address is thirty-one eleven Hunter Mill Road, Whitehall, Maryland. Full disclosure, that is on the Baltimore County side, not the Hartford County. Forgive me. I'm on the stones from the border. So you may be asking why am I here this evening? You see, I was born and raised in Perryman. And although a woman usually never tells her age, I feel important for this purpose. I am thirty-four years old. I spent the first twenty-four years on this earth, that's seventy point five percent of my life in Perryman, at sixteen thirty-eight Perryman Road where my parents still reside and have lived for over thirty years. The Mitchells aren't the only generational family in Perryman. I was born in nineteen eighty-seven and as such, I've quite literally grown up in the transition of the Mitchell property from once agricultural land into warehouses and distribution centers. So I am by definition a millennial. And you probably heard the phrase, "The Great Resignation", quote from the Bloomberg. "The Great Resignation has US workers quitting their jobs in record numbers. More than twenty-four million did so from April to September in two thousand and twenty-one and many are staying out of the labor force." A quote from the Times. "Economists predict that the Great Resignation is only getting started, especially for Gen Z and millennial workers who are positioned to find new jobs to earn an income." The only pro I keep hearing over and over for this project is the prospect for jobs. But jobs for who? It is becoming statistically proven that these upcoming generations don't want these types of jobs. Economists are worried that the worker shortage we are currently experiencing is not a fad, but rather the early onset of a generational shift of workers who are redefining what a good, sustainable job is. And believe it or not, millennials and Gen Z are choosing purpose over profit. I know because I am one of them. It is that very peninsula, the surrounding Bush River. Its forest and, yes, even ironically enough, our literal neighbors, the Mitchells farm fields. Sorry. Where I grew to respect and learn the important life-sustaining connection between water, land and people. So much so that it inspired me to pursue a career in the environmental restoration for the last eleven years. And not to brag, but I can assure you I make more than what a warehouse worker will make. So, yes, there are well-paying jobs for restoring the environment and not destroying it. And I am but one of many. Please pass Bill twenty-two oh oh three. Let's build sustainably and therefore economically wisely for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Harry Webster, followed by Jesse Meekins.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My fellow Perryman residents are amazing. Amazing people. You know, they've been studying, searching, remembering, envisioning, and creating opportunities for the better future of this small village called Perryman. Looking for a different end than an oversized mega warehouse project, I'm sure. Residents are concerned discovering critical gaps in safety, uh, traffic safety and unreliable new road proposals that we don't know where they're coming from based on flawed traffic studies. You, you know the importance of the adequate public facilities laws. The importance that they account for comes down to our public safety and our quality of life. So what seems to be dismissed along the line, comes from the developers, it's a singular environmental fact that the Canning House fields are squarely located in the Chesapeake Bay watershed and the Bush River watershed, on the Bush River shoreline. Also well documented is the fact that the wellhead reclamation area will not be protected. But it will be receiving one of the biggest warehouses on the East Coast with the largest impervious surface. Just consider all that concrete sitting right on top of the wellhead reclamation and it's delineated right in front of your eyes. That kind of development keeps the clean rain and the water from going down into the fields, becoming purified and entering into the aquifer. I think you find out that our residents feel obligated to the county in some way to protect this valuable water supply well into the future. Our Perryman residents want to protect the health and safety of all the residents in Hartford County. We want you to consider being better stewards of the land and the community and considering a much different future use than mega warehouses. The Perryman Village that we envisioned would emphasize walking, hiking, kayaking and biking, preservation of the environment and habitat. We can't accept operations that threaten the community water supply, kill off our wildlife, pollute the air and the water and otherwise threaten what is so important to one of the most important little places in Hartford County and that's Perryman. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Hello. Jesse Meekins. Address is on file. Councilman Johnson said tonight that the council should not be picking winners and losers. Yet, not one of you stood up to the lockdowns that shut down schools, restaurants and small businesses while the big box stores remained open. Big businesses and corporations made record profits and the little guy lost and none of you did anything to stop it. Council President Vincetti was, was recently asked, "What would you do as our last line of defense if Larry Hogan forced another lockdown?" The council president's answer, quote, "I do not know what we can do. When the state comes in and mandates certain things in a state of emergency, I don't know that we can do anything. You risk funding, you risk the opportunity to have a connection with the state that you desperately need to either run your municipality or your county. So I don't know if there is anything you can do," end quote. Of course, there is something you can do. It requires some guts, some courage, putting morality over money, putting your constituency over state leadership, donors and developers. It requires stepping out of your comfort zone and saying one, two-letter word, "No." This should have been a simple answer for the council president. "No, Hartford County will not be locking down again regardless of whatever tyrannical mandates come out of Annapolis. I can't and won't decide who is and isn't essential because everybody's essential." Period. So if the council president is unwilling to stand up for the citizenry of Hartford County to not be forced into another devastating lockdown that forced our kids to be uneducated, forced people to lose their jobs, homes, businesses and livelihoods, then why would we think that he would be willing to stand up against the donors and developers to represent his constituents in Abingdon and Perryman to stop the warehouse development that nobody wants or needs? I find it discouraging that our so-called leaders aren't willing to stand up for us, the citizens. They could have voted to keep Abingdon Woods out of the enterprise zone, but they didn't. They could say that mandatory mask-wearing and lockdowns are owed
They could say that mandatory mask-wearing and lockdowns are over in Harford County, similar to what Councilman Tony G said earlier this year when he said he was done with mask-wearing. But instead of putting your mask back on the very next week like Tony G did, you guys could be leaders and say, "No more." I unfortunately don't have much faith in you guys miraculously doing the right thing and saying no to the mandates and no to the overdevelopment. But with a little luck and a lot of work, we'll have some leaders that will. Thank you.
Terry Anderson followed by Chuck Mizzan.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Terry Anderson, sixteen thirty-eight Perryman Road. It is quite apparent there is such a disparity going on here. The people who spoke against the moratorium were only here because they are getting paid to do so. We are here because we care. We don't charge by the hour for our time either. We have spoken from our hearts because we care about our community, not because of the money we will be making from this deal. The lobbyists, the lawyer, the developer, the engineer, and most of all, the landowner. Is that, is this what is meant by greater Harford? Greater for who? Why is it that the landowner gets top dollar for his property, but the value of mine goes down? Who will compensate me for the loss? Will I get a tax break? Someone spoke of their fond memories of the Bush River. Those were in the past. We are the ones living there now and are still making our memories every day. And we are the ones who want to protect the Bush River for future memories to be made. It was also stated that the fertilizers from the past farming were bad. So creating acres and acres of impervious ground covered with asphalt and concrete is better? I was always taught that two wrongs don't make a right. It seems like our new slogan for Harford County will be, "Come to the land of the unpleasant living, where the traffic and pollution are free and revenues mean more than residents."
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Chuck Mizzan, fifty-year resident of Perryman Peninsula. As you did, as you did, I listened to over fifty speakers three weeks ago. Eight of those spoke in opposition to the moratorium. I want to address a couple of those points that they made. First is that the property was zoned light industrial twenty-five years ago, and this project fits within that zoning. So the entire reason we are requesting this moratorium is that this particular project cannot coexist in this community that presently exists, not the community that we had twenty-five years ago when this zoning was put in place. Twenty-five years later, with Chesapeake Real Estate Group's five-mega warehouse plan presented to us, we as a community see that its clear error was made somewhere along the way. Either the zoning designation of LI is inappropriate for this type of development or the warehouses is just a five point two million. Uh, doesn't make sense in the farmland that's there today with all the other problems that have been built up over those twenty-five years. So we're asking to make the pause to ensure the property still warrants this zoning designation and will fit a five-mega warehouse project. More importantly, I want to address the concern or the statement that was made to this group that we are against the Mitchell family selling their property. This, to me, hit me the hardest because I've lived there for fifty years. I know the Mitchell family. They've worked with us in the community many, many years, and we've put together a lot of successful projects along the way. Especially in the early nineties and two thousands, they were part of that process. We respected the family growing up, and I still respect them today. And just because we all disagree with this particular project doesn't mean we want to take their rights to sell their property. In fact, although we've had some reservations about past developments of this property, we never felt a need to band together like this to fight a project in our community until the absurdity that came from the Chesapeake Real Estate Group. In fact, this same land had a development plan presented to us by Clark Turner in two thousand and seven. That proposed plan was a mixed-use plan. And again, we had concerns, but generally, the majority of people on the peninsula liked or were approachable to the idea of a mixed-use clustered type of development. So I speak for the many residents on the peninsula. We are not opposed to the family selling their land. We are, however, opposed to the Chesapeake Realty Group's mega warehouse plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brendan Patton followed by Ken Shannon.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Brendan Patton, twenty fifty-four Park Beach Drive. You should have in front of you this, which you should be familiar with. It is page one thirty-six of the Harford County zoning code. It lists permitted uses. Everything on this page is not permitted in the LI. You were asking, Councilman Johnson, about black and white? Here it is. One of the things that is not permitted in LI: commercial vehicle and equipment storage. I'm actually concerned about what's going on down there with what's been developed on Woodley Road in the past five years. If you go down there now, there are hundreds of commercial vehicles being stored on those properties. Clear, and that property's all LI, that along Woodley Road. So clearly, there's already violations of the zoning code happening. Now, how those projects were approved when the site plans said clearly that they were going to store commercial vehicles, yet the zoning people said, "That's fine, go ahead." When, right here, on this piece of paper, it says you can't do it? I mean, that's the reason for a moratorium. The planning and zoning people are not enforcing their own code. So either you need to get with them and stop what's going on and just tell them right up front that this Mitchell property cannot be used in this way because you cannot store commercial vehicles on it. That's what should happen, but if that can't happen, then you need to do the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council. My name's Ken Shannon. I live at two zero four four Park Beach Drive in Perryman. I'm here to ask that the council pass Bill number twenty-two dash zero zero three to establish a temporary moratorium on new building within Perryman Peninsula. I've lived in Perryman for nineteen years. Some people think that makes me a new homeowner, but it feels like a long time to me. My two daughters were toddlers when my wife and I brought them to Perryman. Now, one of them is studying public health at Harford Community College, and the other one is serving with the Army in South Korea. And our whole family wants a moratorium on new building so the county can understand the impact existing warehouses are having on the Perryman Peninsula. We've seen a lot of changes in our community the last nineteen years. When we moved into our house, there were one point six million square feet of warehouses in Perryman. By two thousand and twenty, there was seven point five million square feet of mega warehouses. In two thousand and twenty-one alone, over three million additional square feet was added for a total of ten point six million square feet of mega warehouses and freight terminals in Perryman. And now a developer wants to put an additional five point two million square feet of freight terminals in the middle of the Perryman community. That is insane. These are all bad changes for Perryman and South Harford County. The congestion on the roads has increased dramatically. I drive there. I've seen it. Over the last nineteen years, the changes that were supposed to reduce the negative impact of all the new mega warehouses and freight terminals, such as extending Woodley Road to Route seven fifteen, have not happened. That is why we need a moratorium, to address the existing traffic problems before anyone builds more freight terminals. I've seen negative changes to Perryman as a result of development of the new, of the existing warehouses and freight terminals. No one has demonstrated any positive impact for me, my family, my neighbors, my community. That's why we need a moratorium. We need to critically examine the claims that these warehouses bring economic benefit to Harford County. Mr. Johnson, like you, I'm a former military man. And like you, I agree that standards are needed and should be followed. The Harford County zoning code is a standard that says on its first page that it is to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. However, the number and size of current warehouses and freight terminals on Perryman Peninsula is negatively impacting the health, safety, and welfare of the Perryman community. I know because I've lived there for nineteen years. The moratorium is needed to allow time to understand how development on Perryman Peninsula can be brought back in line with the purpose and design of an important standard, the Harford County zoning code. Please vote for Bill twenty-two dash zero zero three to enact a temporary moratorium on building on the Perryman Peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no other speakers signed up, this will conclude the meeting. Thank you.